Are you ready? Okay, excellent. In that case, it is six oh one in the city council meeting of February twenty first, twenty twenty three. This call the word.
Here.
Councilmember.
Here.
Excellent. Excellent. Councilmember for Gen Z.
Present.
Mayor for Gen Z.
Here.
Councilmember. And there.
Here. Excellent. At this time, would you like to approve the approval of the board? Is there any you'd like to page? Obviously, yeah. Hearing no changes, I would intervene by making points.
Three seconds.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. All in favor. Housekeeping matter, anything you know we'd like to talk about before we get rolling?
Mayor, can I ask one thing?
Yes, please.
Um, in reviewing the minutes for the meeting that I missed last week, I noticed that we no longer show a vote and who voted for what. It's just the actual number and not who voted. Um, could I ask that our minutes include who voted yes, no, absent from now on?
Uh, we have ever actually never done that as long as I've been mayor. Uh, we've talked, we showed who voted on on a particular resolution.
Yeah, there was a little grid that you had standing up for them.
I may correct that. Sorry about that. Yes.
Thank you.
We can absolutely make that happen.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're right. I do remember now that grid and we would show for all of those.
Like this and then it switched.
Okay, thank you, Tracy. Any other housekeeping matters? Okay, thank you very much. This time, uh, if anybody in the public would like to speak to city council on items that are not on the agenda, uh, please feel free to come up and introduce yourself, give us your address, and you'll have three minutes. Um, both in chambers and on Zoom. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next up, we have our consent agenda, which is approved in February seventy minutes, and I already have a chance to review those. If I didn't find any problems, if anybody else sees anything, they can let us know.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, here are none. I would indicate a motion, please. Then that means to approve the consent agenda.
One second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. I'm live.
Aye.
Any opposed? That you, any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. All in favor. At this time, we have presentations. We have a presentation from St. George.
I present here.
You certainly do.
Okay. Hi, I'm Lisa Morton, and I represent New York George, and Mark would maybe also jump in and help me with a few things that I might forget to talk about. But thanks for having us tonight, and um, I'm going to talk a little bit about our, our food program and some of our needs. And I also wanted to thank you for the support that you have provided so far. I know that we're receiving um, money from you over, I think maybe we're in the second or third year of that, um, as well as a new volunteer at St. George. And also to have championed our mission there. So um, just a little bit of background. Um, in case people don't know, uh, we've been responding to the, the needs in Lake County and building communities since nineteen ninety two with their food programs, which include the community meals and food pantry. The community meals were started in nineteen ninety two um, and have grown over the years. And then the food pantry, we had a small food pantry, but then the larger pantry that most of you are aware of today started during COVID. Um, as really as a response to COVID, and we also had a box delivery at that time. Um, in twenty twenty one, we worked on prioritizing healthy food, fresh produce, locally grown food. Um, in twenty twenty one, we started with mobile food pantry. If you've seen Moby, uh, the bus driving around in response to reaching some other parts of our community and addressing transportation issues. And in twenty twenty two, our new community kitchen was finished, and if you have a chance to come by, please do, so you can, it's a pretty awesome kitchen. And we're hoping to, um, you know, do more now that that kitchen is done in, in addition to, um, the food that we're providing. Um, and so, uh, definitely in the last four years, our program has grown a lot. I do have some, um, I do have our stats that can hand out to you of what we accomplished last year as far as uh, food rescued and money spent on food and folks served and meals served. We had, um, this year we're already seeing growth. I mean, we're seeing more people come in, um, for the meals and for the pantry. And uh, you know, I think we're seeing inflation, so that's affecting people. We're also going to lose staff funding. Well, where's that? I mean. Uh, yeah, as you all know, the state of emergency for the state of Colorado ends uh, next year to today. Twenty? No, next, next, good thing. Uh, yeah, so that'll just mean a cut in staff benefits for the households for our students. Yeah, so we anticipate that that will also perhaps affect our numbers, um, as more people might need to access uh, pantry and everything else. Um, and you know, St. George continues to be sort of that main point of hunger relief in Lake County. Um, and as you can see from this, we, you know, we provide quite a bit of food. Um, one positive benefit of what we can do with St. George is we're able to, through wholesale, we're able to purchase food at a lower cost than say, you know, people going to the grocery store, um, and we're charged for any of our food, but we're able to, to purchase more food through, through the wholesale that we're able to, to do. And um, and the relationships that lose particularly our, our food coordinator has built with the folks that we get food from. We also do a lot of food rescue, but um, I mean, we didn't used to purchase food at all until the pandemic. And we received funding, and now we purchase as much food as we're able, and the more we have, obviously, the more we're able to provide. Um, and we try to prioritize, you know, relevant food, culturally relevant food, healthy food, all of those sorts of things. Um, and so, like I said, we're seeing more, um, we're seeing more, uh, folks coming into our, uh, to use our, our services. And we serve a wide variety of people. I mean, work with families, single, you know, low income, um, single folks, fixed income folks, as well as our homeless population. We definitely know that we're serving our, our homeless and our transient population through both their meals and the pantry. Um, so we want to be able to continue to provide that healthy and abundant food. Um, in a recent study, Mark, you can probably get more details about that, but um, we were shown that each dollar spent at such as St. George, a dollar spent will buy one point eight pounds of food. Make sure I'm saying this right, and one point five, and provide one point five meals. So we can really like stretch, you know, that, what we're able to do with the funds that we, that we get. And we do, uh, I mean, any funds we get, you know, grant funding, donations goes, most of it, almost all of it goes directly to our food programs. I mean, it goes to purchasing food, it goes to, uh, you know, pay folks to prepare the food, um, to a little bit of maintenance on the building. We always need more, but keeping the roof over our heads and the lights on, but it really does go directly to our services. And um, the folks that work there, as well as the large amount of volunteers that we have, work really hard to make sure that, um, you know, we're, we're providing a uh, a welcoming, uh, safe space, you know, that is, is um, encouraging community building and, um, and meeting people's needs. Um, so within inflation and things like that, we're budgeting, we're anticipating that we're going to spend more this year on food. We're budgeting approximately two hundred fifty thousand dollars on food. We're in, in, in looking at our budget right now. We're facing about a fifty thousand dollar gap in that, and we would like to ask for help with, um, building that gap. Um, let's see, what else? Can I forgive Mark? Yeah, I really covered it a lot. I think, um, yeah, just, you know, both of us are volunteers at St. George, and Lisa's been there for a really long time. Um, but you know, just getting to observe the, what they've done over the past couple of years, um, has been incredible. And just really seeing, you know, not only being able to band together and do that emergency response that we desperately needed in twenty twenty. Just kind of seeing how the organization is growing and has grown. Um, and like, I don't know, because the food programs are, you know, going to be a staple of our community. Um, and St. George is kind of in the process of deciding what that looks like. Um, but yeah, I don't know. I just think they, they have really, really come through for our community. Um, yeah, and I don't know. I just trust them. I think they're fantastic. Yeah. Um, you know, we're in the right place at the right time. I mean, I don't know that we're really brilliant, just, but I mean, I happen to be providing food and boom. Yeah, I don't know. But just to see, you know, how they like figured out, like you said, how to build relationships with local farmers, how to be super efficient in their ordering, you know, like what food can we get for free, what food can we get from government programs? And then really allocating the money we spend on fruits and vegetables. Um, yeah, I don't know. I think. We have four meals a week, food pantry, in-house pantries that are really big. I mean, I'm trying to remember how many people come in. We have like a hundred people. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's right. Yeah. Yeah, and then one local pantry that goes out to Mountain View. Then once a month, host the. We think so. Yeah, there's all these other little things as well. Yeah, we're really carrying the weight of food access for our community.
Interesting. That's very interesting. Thank you. Um, you know, I just any questions, but I also have a suggestion before we have questions. Bob, I would love it if you, uh, gave city council a proposal about what you feel like you need, what you feel like, you know, you would ask of us, and we could put it on an agenda in the, in the near future. Um, and have that conversation with the city council based on, on your, your proposal and, and, you know, make a decision.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, so a proposal for what we need monetarily or?
Yeah, and then what, what are you asking the city of? What, I mean, you know, what is your ask? Okay, uh, are there any questions, uh, from city council members?
Yeah, I think I have just along those same lines. My question was, with the anticipated fifty thousand, um, deficit, what other, what other, who else are you approaching and what other sources are you looking at? Um, just as I know we'll be sort of wrestling with, you know, what can the city do and?
Sure, yeah. And I mean, I can just say right now, we're always working on grants. Um, I mean, we get donations, we're always looking at grants. I mean, I wonder how many, actually, the Vassalism, how many grants she has, how many, three or four grants for sure. And there's some that we get year after year, but it's going to change in a little bit. Yeah, yeah, so we have our projected budget for twenty twenty three. Um, grants tend to run in seasons, so we have a handful that'll, the applications open like May, April-ish. Um, so if, if we received all of the ones we planned to apply for, then that fifty thousand dollar gap would still exist. Um, the nature of grant funding, if you don't please a funder for whatever reason, they could decide that despite how essential of a service it is, you unfortunately, you know, don't get the money. So always prepare for that. Um, and yeah, and so we are speaking with you all, hoping that the county would be willing to invest um, some money as well, using the American Rescue Plan Fund specifically. Um, yeah, and then, I mean, the sad thing is like, we'll, we'll, I don't know, we'll write grants, we'll, there's like ten of us who slave over the computer, we'll make it happen. But, uh, but yeah, I think as well to the American Rescue Plan funding, what's, what is nice about it, as Lisa kind of pointed out, um, a lot of the food access funds, it is, I think, considerably easier to, um, to get like a very specific grant that says you must buy Colorado grown produce than it is to get the more flexible funding that the American Rescue Plan could provide. Um, you know, because we do have to have personnel there and operating costs to keep the lights on and, um, take care of the building, like all of those things. So, yeah, the uniqueness of the rescue plan funding and the fact that it was kind of earmarked by the government to stabilize our food systems, I think is kind of a unique asset to that. Um, but yeah, and then we're also, I think the other thing is just in the long term, we're looking at what, um, you know, what the future of St. George could be. Um, you say we have the community kitchen, we're kind of exploring, you know, we have some sort of wholesale product that's produced at the kitchen, you know, and that's a model that some other countries use. Yeah, they sell locally, local grocery stores, stuff like that. So looking into revenue generating options, um.
We also know some, some businesses can, uh, in, in local, uh, taters in particular, can use a cafeteria, you know, and, and is that a, is that a revenue source for you as well?
Right, yeah, yeah. Um, and you know, we definitely are restricted as a charitable organization in, in that, um, A and one, that's, you know, kind of, kind of under the bigger umbrella of, um, the diocese. So, uh, yeah, and our mission as well, while we do want to hopefully generate a little bit of revenue, um, I think, yeah, our, our goal is always to serve people, no questions asked, no exchange necessary. So.
What I could do is when, when we have enough agenda to make sure we have a, you know, a, a calculation about the FBA funds um, and whether or not there's any room there, uh, I will give it back, you know, right now.
How much do we have in the contingent fund?
Well, we started at thirty eight thousand. Uh, we, we did six thousand at the last in council meeting. What were we thinking?
Oh, no, I was, I was just saying, I've been talking to Don, Donna, about this, because I, I mean, I think deciding like what we actually have in the contingency fund, because there were some surplus monies from last year that got placed into it as a holder, not for about economic development or anything like that.
Okay.
But they're just, they're just there. It's just there as part, so we don't have to.
That would be an interesting accounting as well. That was a part of the conversation.
So, so yeah, we have like the, the discretionary stuff we started with. There's actually some in there that we need to decide if we want to make a discretionary or.
All right, thank you. Uh, any questions for you, Mark or Lisa? Tracy, Max? Okay. Thank you all very much. I would like to make a statement. I don't know if this committee would have done what I'll say at Georgia's in the last three years, honestly. But you guys have done has been miraculous. Not sure how you guys have done. Uh, and then we'll build it if, so, um, it, it, it's incredible. Really incredible what you do. So thank you very much.
Yeah, we have our first business, food business using the kitchen tonight for the first time, which is super, super exciting. Um, a local food business is using the commercial kitchen to expand her operation. So.
Fantastic.
Super excited, really good for it.
All right, thank you most of all.
Um, yeah, in terms of timeline, so send you a proposal within that fifty thousand dollar gap.
Actually, if you consider the warning, um, um, let's go that direction. But, uh, maybe I'm just going to suggest in the next two weeks.
All right, yes, we can do that.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
You can deal with that in your spare time.
Hold it straight. Get it on the agenda. Awesome. And would it be helpful to kind of send like that sheet with information or?
Okay, cool. Give us the big picture.
Yeah, for grant records, we got you. Yeah. Honestly.
I do it all the time.
Yeah, I know, we still doing them by CD, one in volunteer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a transit update. Is that Tim? Who's going to transit update?
No, I, sorry, go ahead, Lori.
I, I thought it was Commissioner Marcela, remember our meeting that we had with her? She, I, well, it was under my understanding that she.
Well, I didn't see her, so Tim's up.
Yeah, yeah, I, I do not have the transit update, but I do have an apology from Commissioner Marcela. She had a sick, uh, kid today, and that has now spread to the other two kids. So she's at home dealing with that. Um, uh, so Lori, could I work with you to be on the next agenda for Commissioner Marcela to provide the update?
Sure, that would be great. And, and the, the mayor and I had a, had a conversation with Commissioner Marcela, and I just, I want to thank the county. Things are going really well on the, you know, as you remember, the, there was a joint effort to hire, um, uh, uh, Jason from the consulting firm to completed the work and the community outreach to decide which options would be best for the city. And so that has concluded, and now it's just a matter of, uh, you know, identifying a potential funding, and the county's been doing a really good job about that. So it, it, it will be a good update. So, yes.
Commissioner Marcela has great contacts, uh, in C D O of the state for, for the funding options. Uh, she, she seems pretty confident about the possibility of funding, maybe even, you know, dare I say, getting something together, you know, sometime this summer, but I, I can't make that commitment yet, uh, but she's done great work as well. Pretty fantastic.
And the other, I mean, we've updated this a number of times, the, the, um, inner mountain transportation region, I M T P R. You know, the, the county was really good about applying for money through that and received a substantial amount of money for this program through that. So, um, it is good news. So, yes, we can, whenever you want to reschedule, Ken, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. You're off the hook.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, next up, we have time of seventeen, it's National Historic Landmark District Amendments Schedule and Process.
All right, I'll be presenting this. I'll try to be as brief as possible. I just wanted to give the, the council an update on how I would like to proceed going forward with the, the historic district code amendments. Um, so we'll fly, fly from these, these slides. Just to remind the council, um, the first proposed amendment that, that you've seen multiple times now is to address the six-month demolition loophole. The second is to allow for site visits. And then the third is to expand the applicability of the, the historic code, uh, from just regulating the retail core, the, uh, bake, uh, in additions to baking residential properties and demolitions, to now additionally include, uh, additions, exterior modifications in any commercial use, commercial buildings, and all that will apply within the entire NHL district. Um, I just want to go into, or just quick, quickly show where we're at in terms of the process so far. We technically have nine public meetings so far, uh, regarding, um, these proposed amendments, uh, including the, the, the meetings for the demolition moratoriums. Um, so today I just wanted to give this presentation to, um, update the council on this proposed schedule process for, um, for these two proposed ordinances. Go to the next slide, please. Um, so right now, current status is, we, we have majority support of city council, um, after the work sessions that we've gone through. And, um, we're aware of some minor tech, uh, minor technical amendments that we need to make, um, that they're requested by city council, both that stat and city attorney have identified. So we'd like to do two separate ordinances. The first ordinance would address that six-month demolition loophole and allow site visits. And then the second ordinance would be the ordinance that would expand the applicability to the entire NHL district. Go to the next slide, please. Um, so really the purpose of separating this is so that you can see that, um, that last bullet point under ordinance A. It's so that we can, we can push through the six-month demolition loophole, um, since that is really non-contemptious. And then we can remove the demolition moratorium as quickly as possible. So that demolition moratorium right now is effective until November. Um, and the, the, the second purpose for this process is I'd like to do some additional public engagement sessions for the expanded applicability, so to have some open houses. And so by separating these ordinances and the two ordinances, it allows us to have a more relaxed process and, um, have some open house sessions, public engagement sessions for the ordinance that would expand the applicability, um, within the entire NHL district. Um, so effectively that would give us two, um, the demolition moratorium could, will be lifted two months, uh, sooner than if we had just done this as a combined ordinance. Uh, we can go to the next slide. Um, so I think this is my last slide here, but just to want to clarify the, the purpose of the open houses and the public engagement section, sessions. Uh, so this is really to, um, clarify this, this intent. So the first is, we want to communicate to the public that we are, um, trying to, um, allow staff, HPC, and the city council to review these projects, could have these really big impacts to the, uh, to the character of our historic district. So we're, we're thinking facade replacements of historic buildings that are proposed to be in some, you know, some modern facade, um, attached multiple-story accessory dwelling units, uh, any kind of commercial use, like bars, restaurants, offices that are not currently regulated by the historic code, um, in these residential areas. And then the second thing I want to clarify is, you know, for, for our, our local homeowners, we want to have a very non-comersome, simple administrative process, so that if they're proposing to maintain their home, they want to reword their home, they want to upgrade their windows, energy-efficient windows, they want to repaint, et cetera, that we can have the simplest process possible for them to come receive approval, but still we have some check for them. Uh, so that's really the intent of the, the public open house engagement sessions. Um, so that's it for me. I can, I can take any questions. I got more, yeah, I can take any questions that anyone has. But just want to make sure I have, um, support from the council as before we proceed to planning zoning commission, working with city attorney for these, these ordinances and, and do the open houses and all that, because the next time this will be coming back to you would be an ordinance format.
Yeah, I mean, maybe, uh, maybe what you just said answers this, but I know when these changes first came before council in September of last year, they weren't not, not contentious. Um, and I ended up speaking quite a bit with, with Christiana about rewording some of it in the end of October. So when we had our work session, what we were working with was still the old language with just comments from the HPC commissioners on it. And so I guess my question is, is, are we going to get any other preview of Christiana's rewording of some of that? That would make it less not, not contentious, um, before just getting the ordinance? Or is that when we'll see the final proposed language? Because what we talked about at the work session was the old stuff.
Right. We, we, yeah, we, maybe we can go back a few slides.
You can get the schedule back.
Yeah, that's to the schedule, but, uh, we, we can certainly, um, come, come back for, whether it be a work session or just another presentation kind of like this with, with that ordinance. Um, and, and, you know, not, not a first reading or a second reading, because it would still have to go to Planning and Zoning Commission. But I think it ma, does make sense to come back to city council before we go to Planning and Zoning Commission with those revised remarks from the city attorney. So I, I just put this together this afternoon, because I was sick last week. But yeah, we, we can introduce like a, another city council review, uh, for, um, I'm assuming it's going to be for the applicability. Uh, for, oh, I'm sorry, okay, great. So we can do that before Planning and Zoning Commission?
I would appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I have a question. We're talking about the ZOPO housing. How are we going to notice those in such a way that the public really knows we're grabbing them?
Yeah, that, this, this would really be my first time as a, as a, as a planning director being responsible for, for that whole process. So I have to think about that a little bit, but I, I think as, as much as possible.
One thing we've done is we've done the news load, and it goes to every household.
Yeah.
We can do that again.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
We have to do it pretty soon, based on the schedule.
Yeah, and this is really, I mean, Christiana hasn't even had a chance to like review. This is kind of best case scenario. But we definitely want to, you know, allow a few weeks at a minimum to, uh, a public notice. Now, you know, paper, mailings, wire postings, whatever we can.
I can tell you it takes ten days to two weeks from the time we send the document to the company that sends these out and the, every, uh, every door direct mailings. Um, so we have to have enough lead time, we're giving it to households at least weeks before uh, we're going to have an open house.
Right.
So we've got to be talking five weeks out to, to send that to be published and sent out. And sent out automatically, it's mailed directly over, every door direct.
Right.
Imagine that. Uh, but yeah, so just an idea of, of timeframe.
Yeah, I mean, I would, some, we would probably want to add a month to, to at least A, uh, or I'm sorry, to, to both of these schedules. So you're realistically, you're looking at, you know, we're all said and done in, in June, early July of, of, for ordinance A and August, September, the earliest for, uh, for ordinance B in terms of effectiveness of the ordinance.
Also worry about the open houses, there is B in terms of. I'm also worried about the open houses, but it's B in terms of, you know, really let the public know, you let the public know either way, it's how you want to know.
And and just here, we we have struggled with that, I I do know, you know, sometimes people have sent that a mailing out and half the people in the room say. I don't, I didn't get it, or I don't remember getting it, I think we need to have multiple prompts, I think.
Sure.
We discussed this many times here in the council, I think the newspaper, uh you know, essentially worded not. Their usual postings and maybe we could try and get something out to um some of our lists that we already use. But I I, you know, I think it has to be multiple.
Multiple, yes, yeah, I just think if you're gonna have an open house, it doesn't really get a lot of people know, agreed, okay, thank you.
Main Street, talking about.
Thank you.
We help and we.
Appreciate it.
Okay, any questions? All right, thank you, thanks, uh next up here, the city administration report.
Great, thank you, uh so a couple of uh updates. The uh Community Justice Center had an executive board meeting a couple of weeks ago. And uh it is, you know, unfortunate that we we are in a place where. Not unexpectedly, the costs have risen quite substantially uh for the buildout of the Community Justice Center, and so. The meeting was uh with the design team, but mainly led by Commissioner Fiedler, who indicated that. Uh from the time that the city entered into the term sheet with uh the county, the estimated cost at that time were about forty four million. The estimated costs are now up to about sixty million, uh so that is a substantial increase in costs. And so that, you know, really put the question forth as to, you know, what are the paths forward? And um this is, you know, public knowledge, counties have a number of meetings on that, but but the options that. The county is considering at this point is um to continue the path with the current site and design and then just not. Try and put the pedal to the metal, full gas, trying to hit the next construction season this summer. But you know, essentially take their a little more time, a little more breath uh to put a pause on that. So that's one option, the other option is to look at phasing. And uh you know, at of of the development and uh also look at renovating the current courthouse, reexamining a look at that and. And and what Commissioner Fiedler, you know, did acknowledge that in the past, that may not have been an attractive option with increased costs that could potentially be. An option, so I think right now um the plan is to, you know, not. Completely stop the process right now with the entitlements and the application process. But you know, to really not try and rush it for the next construction season and to maybe take a pause and make sure that whatever path it is. That is a thoughtful path and is the right path. Uh and you know, if you if you remember the 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 city's uh portion of it, we have a term sheet with the county. And that involves uh us receiving, you know, a fixed amount of space for fixed cost. And then a fixed operating cost, those, of course, those terms haven't changed. Um but you know, I don't, you know, my opinion is that that any contribution that the city could make is not gonna make up that gap in financing that they have. And so, um while it's not great news, it's it's where we are and it's the reality of the situation, um so. I wanted to pass along that information and uh I, if you have any questions about that, I can do my best to answer them. Or, you know, get Bachelor Commissioner Fiedler and answer them. If there, I can pause for a moment at that point. Um all right, so in in also discussing facilities. We had talked about doing a comprehensive look at the city ourselves, and my first step I told you all was I would reach out to other cities. That had done a comprehensive facilities assessment, you know, where are uh, you know, where are we? What buildings do we have, what condition are the buildings in, what building space do we need? So I sent an email out to other cities asking, a number of cities have used local architects. I received a response from a couple of other cities and it was helpful, but not really exactly what we were looking for. A couple of cities indicated that they had looked at one particular building, so like a police department building renovation. And they had, a lot of times, cities had used local architects, and so I have some contact information from, you know, architects that they used in their area. Um the one I thought that was most in in lightning uh was a Gypsum, their uh town manager sent me. They did a comprehensive analysis of all of their buildings and and essentially, I think in some sense, what. We kind of contemplated, uh and I was like, oh, this is great, you know, this is, you know, hundred page report, it was insanely comprehensive and it was. I made the mistake of asking how much it costs, and Gypsum paid a hundred and twenty six thousand dollars for their facilities assessment. And then their town manager wrote back, this is a little more comprehensive than you might want, so I just want you to know, I am working on that and and guess what? So I guess what I got was maybe way too small and maybe way too big of information trying to get from other cities. And we kind of maybe want something something in the middle, so I just wanted to let you all know, I I I haven't forgotten about that because, you know, we wanna look at twenty twenty three. We have a outrun space for a number of our departments, so it is, it is something I'm working on, but. I haven't found a magic answer just yet as far as who can do something for us that would fit within what we're looking for and within our budget. On the lines of facilities, uh as you may recall, the heat went out at City Hall a while back, several months ago. Uh at sort of, I think more sort of the start of the winter, and it got us thinking about. You know, what what should we do in with this building, given the current state of our boiler? Um so we had Tolan Mechanical, who uh the county used to replace their boiler, uh we had a gentleman come out from. Tolan Mechanical take a look at everything and, you know, I think we updated you previously, it's a situation where our boiler may. Work just fine for, you know, the next year, who knows how long it's been, surely long, it's exceeded its lifespan. Uh more than, and so we were worried about coming into the winter, should the heat fail, we can't operate here for any length of time at City Hall. Without heat, we blow out the circuit breakers if we run space heaters, so. The estimate we received back is a preliminary estimate of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Uh and that is would be basically placing a new boiler beside the old boilers, which there's a reason for that, is that. Dismantling those old boilers and trying to get them out of this building would be really, really expensive. So where we are with that right now is we have the estimate, uh the mayor has some more questions, um we are evaluating it and. Looking at some questions about lead time for the equipment could be an issue, part of the reason we wanted to get it going on it now is in case. You know, some of this, um some of the materials were six to eight months out, that would put us in a pickle if the heat went out over the winter, so. Uh that's where we are with that, and um I, once we get some more of our questions answered, I think we can. Talk to Tolan Mechanical and and see what their lead time is for.
Can you ask Mr. Bergman what the lead time was for the replacement of their boiler in the county?
I believe it was nine months.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Matt.
I was just curious who provided the estimate and if we're gonna receive any additional bids.
Yeah, we we were just, we're just fishing at this point, it was Tolan Mechanical, they did the boiler at the county. Uh the answer is, yeah, we wouldn't go forward without it, without other bids.
Right, for for current policy, we would, this dollar amount, we would need to put it out for bid.
We just wanted to, somebody give us an idea of what we're up against.
Okay, just making sure.
Well, and and actually, that was, that that was a little bit putting the cart before the horse, what we wanted was someone to come out and look at the boiler and tell us. Are we in imminent danger, or are, can we buy a little more time? Was actually the reason, the primary reason we had Tolan Mechanical come out was like, is this thing limping along with this last breath? And we need to jump on this immediately, and you know, the answer we got is, it it could, it could turn along, you know. Fine, or it could collapse tomorrow, I think, and then, which isn't entirely helpful, but they didn't essentially say to you, to us. You need to replace this immediately, this thing is gonna die tomorrow, and I think that was kind of what we were worried about going into the winter, so. That's kind of how we we started this process.
And Ms. Simonson, I guess my question is, uh so, but they did say, or I, if, correct me if I'm wrong, that. The boiler is beyond its useful lifespan, is that correct?
Yes.
Yep, so, so what I'm, that, so in in that regard, yeah, maybe we can limp it around long. Maybe we can get lucky, maybe it's one year, maybe it's ten years, however, we should probably budget a new bo- boiler. Uh into our budget, because it's, it's better to be preventative than reactive, right, in this case?
A- absolutely, and that's why we were worried about the the winter, I mean, obviously, if we we get through this winter, we've got a little more lead time, but you're absolutely right. It, we're we're, I I don't know if he said it this way, but we're rolling the dice at this point with the boiler.
Council member, would you want to say something?
Tracy, go ahead.
Thank you, um if we're going to replace a boiler, can I ask that we also remodel? The basement around the boiler so that the heat from the boiler isn't overflowing into the police department areas and. Make it a little more livable down there.
I think that would probably come with, I'm just assuming that a new boiler might take care of some of that problem, that old boiler is. It's a brick line furnace is what's dead down there right now. Uh and modern boilers are quite a bit different, quite a bit more efficient, and if you have a unlike a boiler system in your house, you realize it doesn't put out on that. So I'm hoping that that would exactly what happened, to that point, the police department completely remodeled the uh. The basement uh uh yesterday, is that correct? Is it all shiny and new?
It's, it's a lot better than what it was.
We will, we will, we will ask Eric to to talk about that during his updates, but yes, we are, we are getting there. Um okay, so that's the, well, there are other other facilities updates, the, as you all might see, the parklet construction has resumed. Uh the trusses are up, they are uh putting the uh. Highway down for the roof, and so the roof is well on its way, uh then the siding is going to come next. And then, once the doors are able to be installed, they can do the interior work, including the heat. And uh we are talking about is excitingly, you know, plants and the landscape uh plan for the project, so. Things are moving along nicely, uh the uh contractor, Masked Winger, is doing a great job. So we are, we're back on track and uh hopefully getting that project done quickly, uh. Their hope is hoping to do a community paper project, so when the papers go in for the uh walkway there. To try and do some type of community involvement, so that there's, um I think she's got a a a vision of somehow. Each person who wants to could design a type of paper, so there uh be some sort of uh. I don't know, sort of nice touch, sort of, you know, you have your own signature on it, so. Uh very exciting to get that re-going, knocking on wood with the weather that that continues, so we can keep doing that. Update on one other thing Donna and I had talked about, um we talked about the two A revenue, so we have made a lot of allocations. As a city with regard to the two A money, I just wanted to update everybody on what we've actually distributed. So, as you may recall, we allocated seventy thousand dollars towards the salary of the Regional Housing Director, Jackie Wallahan, so. We have paid that prorated for um last year, twenty twenty two, as you recall, uh never didn't start at the beginning of last year. Um so we prorated and paid that, all we need um is an invoice for twenty twenty three, and then that will be. The full seventy thousand dollars for twenty twenty three that we allocated, we will distribute that. Uh then the Regional Housing Authority, as you all may recall, we made an allocation for the Regional Housing Authority. In the I G A we have with county, and just so you know, um that was in S, it was an estimate. Of what would be be the leftover two A money, right, so we allocate the two A money and we said, whatever's left over will get to the Regional Housing Authority. So so far, we've distributed twenty thousand dollars, and that was in about September, October, and then we just did a second distribution of about. Fifty thousand dollars in February, and we had estimated in the I G A that the leftover money would be about seventy thousand dollars. We'll have to see exactly how that plays out, but um that was our estimate and that is what has been distributed so far. So that is good, because the Regional Housing Authority now has some operating funds, um.
What's our distribution in tourism at this point?
Uh well, so their their percentage allocation, I don't think there's any.
One point ninety percent, yes, against the five, against the five, four point ninety two.
Right, cuz that's, that is, that's.
All right, thank you.
Okay, um other things, since we're talking about money, I just wanna thank the city council, because we had talked a while back about getting you. Um the tablets in order to save on money that we spend at City Hall, and Donna has reported that our. Um copier uh use cost is down about two hundred dollars a month, so thank you, thank you. Um like to report back that things are making a difference, so that actually is making a difference. Um I'm not gonna, Nancy is gonna do a Main Street update for you all. Uh and she, right now, it's under apartments, but if we don't wanna create any confusion, Main Street, it's still its stand, own standalone entity, book. So we'll, we'll put that up in presentations the next time you see it, but we have put it under department reports, because, you know, we had said. Main Street is coming back with the city, well, we're we're, you just so you know, uh we went over today, Nancy's got a great home, a taper home, it's looking lovely. So she's homed, has an office in a place, the good news is that today, um there was a lovely board meeting with. Um John McMurtry and of Lake County Community Fund is going to be the five oh one C three sponsor, this will sponsor. For Main Street, and so that is a good thing, they can use, they will have a five oh one C three status. Uh and then last thing is, uh just a couple of events that I wanted to flag that are coming up. Please, city council members, check your council member emails, uh our U S rep Brittany Pedersen is coming Friday. And we will, this is her thank you introduction meeting with all the communities. And the elected officials meeting is at one thirty here at City Hall on Friday, and we would love to have you attend that. She's also having a community event uh open to everyone at five P M at the Old Borough, but the elected is here at one thirty. On Friday, uh other thing to mark your calendar for is the Lake County Community Fund State of the Community Event. Will be March thirtieth at uh freight at five P M, five to seven P M, it's always a lovely, wonderful event. Um highlighting just the wonderful things the community does for for each other. And um then first of all, know that we are having a work session next um Tuesday. Uh a work session at our usual time, six P M uh regarding short-term rentals, and I won't steal. Uh Chief and Spender, he can give you a little more detail, but I just wanna make sure those things are on your calendars. So, lots of stuff going on.
Any questions for City Administrator Simonson?
Senator for Tennessee, thank you.
Max, please.
Uh thank you, Mayor, uh uh Ms. Simonson, I was just curious, I know we're gonna hear about the police report. Uh in in the department reports, however, can you give an update on where we are in uh in the police department and uh. With Chief Chief Edwards? And the status and is it, and his uh, and his status and what we're gonna be doing to move forward?
Yes, uh so, you know, we we wanna update everyone that Chief Edwards is, his last day with the city was February third. Uh we have an interim chief who is going to help us out for as long as need be, and we will begin uh the process to. Uh obtain a new chief of police, and I've already gotten some insight from other jurisdictions and cities about. How that process has worked, um the city of Nederland just went through a search for a new police chief, and they were very happy with the process. So we will be starting that process uh in that. As as soon as I can get it on my list of things.
Thank you, and then, has there been any updates on the uh Human Resources Director, any, any, any people? Thank you, and then, has there been any updates on the uh Human Resources Director, any, any, any people that had found interesting?
Yes, yes, thank you, and I'm not gonna jinx anything. I'm not gonna jinx anything, uh, because I'm not gonna, we have a very promising candidate who came in for two interviews. And I'm in the process of checking her references right now. And uh, I have two more people I'd like to reach, but the two people I'd love to have just have glowing things to say. So we are, I I like I said, I Murphy's law, I really don't want to jinx anything, but we have a very promising candidate. Yes, I know, yes, and actually, yeah, I I was gonna raise that, and then I I kind of thought, uh, but it it, you know, I know we we've been, that's been a long road for us, and it will be a welcome relief.
Great, that's good news on the hiring front, in both, in both, in both arenas. Thank you for the updates.
Any other questions for City Administrator? Great, thank you very much. At this time, we are department reports, we will start with police department. Regarding staffing, we will be losing one officer on March second. That'll close toward two officers down based on our twenty-three budget. Which is five full-time officers, we'll be down to three. Highlights for January recently, we've sent a number of our members to training. Our two administrative staff have been through inspection training. Two our officers attended a critical incident. Managing training, which is how to deal with individuals, perhaps a crisis management, mental health issues, substance abuse. And that's in it's all I have last week. And also one, our supervisor also attended a leadership course. One day for it, um, a significant improvement has been in the uh writing of parking tickets and some, uh, through some guidance and counseling myself to the standard. Highlighting the importance of doing that, the right reasons, at the right times. Our uh numbers have gone up significantly from the center in the months before, the middle of January. Uh, we recently also got one vehicle repaired and backed from Denver uh law enforcement supply company that enables both of our community uh service officers to have a vehicle of their own to respond. And have it all the time. Other than that, the only we asked recently is, uh, we've got a number of phone calls complaining about the parking from the post office. I don't know much about the background of that, but it's posted and it is there. So as I've indicated to all of our staff, we cite when it's appropriate. Uh, there's the letter of the law, and then there's the spirit of the law, it's trying to get compliance anytime we can by asking people in warning. But when a, when a violation is so significant or obvious, such as parking in a handicap, following a handicap or parking in a uh no parking spot, where it is, then it requires a citation or something. Uh, additionally, our CSO officers have been uh proven as far as checking on snow removal on the sidewalks in the downtown Harrison Avenue, both sides, that has improved significantly. We have two uh, two home uh business owners I contacted previously uh that were somewhat reluctant to, but after some suggestions and uh slight modifications advised them, they can comply quite, so that's very normal. Again, to improve the safety along the business strip, so people walking in Harrison, I don't have anybody that's gonna fall and slip and get injured. Any other questions, that concludes my briefing. Are there any questions for the chief?
Just one, one point of clarification and and uh, I I, you know, the one officer we're gonna lose, I think it's uh, you know, it's it's bittersweet. In a way, we are, we are losing an officer to the sheriff's office. So, you know, it's the sheriff's office who's trying to beef up, and we know this happens, you know. We've, we've, we've taken, we've taken good people from other communities, I'm looking at Chayton. Uh, so, uh, you know, I think, un- unfortunately, you know, the the sheriff's department gain is our loss in that, in that sense. And so, um, I feel like for for us, it is, uh, you're not leaving someone out of the community, and so I, it is, while it's bittersweet, it it the sting is a little bit less that we will still have this law enforcement officer serving our community.
In conjunction with that, I'm glad you said that. Uh, the level of cooperation right now between the sheriff's department and the police department is at kind of an all-time high. Both agencies are working very well together, I've met several times with the sheriff's department, and we have pledged to work well with each other, support each other as many times as we can. So I think that's something to be said of an improvement that hasn't happened for perhaps quite some time, and you might know that history better than I. And lastly, uh, myself and Tony drove the route for the uh ski Jordan. And we're prepared for that, I'll synchronize as far as that piece goes. And then also for the uh, Minister of Buckingham and the Northern uh races that are gonna happen in conjunction, so we're prepared for that in pretty good order. Any questions?
I I have another point of clarification, uh, you had said something about the the number of police officers. We are funding for six police officers and two CSOs in our budget. Uh, so you'll be down to five police officers, as far as I can tell, and two CSOs.
Right, twenty-three budgets show you see these chief supervisor, five officers, one part-time officer, two CSOs, and two administrators there.
Yeah, it's a little mistake, okay, got it.
Thank you.
Oh, actually, you know what, we, I, we, we were gonna make you talk about this, so uh, the uh, this entire staff came in yesterday.
Yes, uh, thank you. So as both a team building event as well as something to improve the station. About ninety-seven members came in yesterday on holiday, and we organized a cleanup event for the station. So we worked on both the main floor on this level as well as in the basement. And we filled the trash dumpster outside completely full of trash and things that needed to be taken in for a while. It really ate it a lot back in the back where they have their break room where they eat, that was filled with all kinds of junk and boxers and stuff. But they obviously weren't forced to eat at their desk among their own papers and computers and stuff, it kind of, you know, keeps a really uh very tight space and kind of a very well-placed to eat in and kind of eat at breakfast every day. So that area is completely cleaned up. Um, a lot of stuff was uh looked at, thrown away, and we put in different places it needs to be. And downstairs was a huge cleanup, as opposed to things that we needed to throw away, the old, old uniforms, which we cut the patches off of. And other things, we still have a lot more to go with the basement, but it was a very big step last night. And I think they really, really uh did a good job working together in a big team fashion. So seeing the chief roll this sleeves out, they get there as well then, I think that was something that that encouraged them to work as a team. Any questions for the chief? Alright, thank you very much. Next up, we have a fire department. That would be Dan.
Right, David. Mike, Mayor, in the council, um. So you'll see, uh, my report this evening is a little different than I normally give on a monthly report, this is kind of what I give annually. Um, it it kind of went along with what the city administrator put out. That was more statistics, they kind of like our overall broad um accomplishments for twenty twenty-two. This is just a little bit more information for you and general public, we put it out on multiple social media outlets. And um, kind of like the body of the letter that I write here. You know, it says a little bit about myself, but also um kind of what our organization and how our our organization is structured. And then I I talk a little bit about wildland fire and the mitigation efforts that will be coming in twenty twenty-three, based on the city of PPE that was accomplished this last year, and how we're gonna start rolling that out in community forums, and you know, to actually talk to our community members on how best they can do those efforts. We are discussing those right now in the Lake County Forest Health Council, um, that has been formalized here in Lake County, and we've had two meetings already. And you'd be amazed on how much efforts are already being taken care of by our partners um in in those efforts. I mean, there's a lot of projects going on here in Lake County, of course, we're gonna do more as time and money allows. So uh, and then I go into talking about uh some capital improvements, some grants and so forth that we've uh been able to obtain in twenty twenty-two. A lot of that has to do with supporting our staffing, currently right now, it uh, it had to do with the uh plum event system for seventy-three thousand down to Station Two, over fifty thousand dollars. We just got the uh AFG grant, I found out last year or last week, uh forty-four thousand eight fifty for uh twelve sets of bunker gear. And then uh, along with that, we also got the um House Bill eleven ninety-four grant for additional sets of bunker gear, so uh now we're gonna be set with a lot of PPE. And then our annual purchase on that for replacement is going to be a pro with what we have continuing in the future. Um, so we don't have to have an impact, a huge impact on the budget. Currently, right now, we have residents running uh their required ride-alongs to see if they're gonna come on our department in our residency program or a reserve program. So we're pretty excited about that, to see some fresh faces and be able to start uh instructing them and and uh giving them everything that they need for their organization and for their career path. Uh, next is our services, uh, you know, all hazard. The first section of that is what we actually do for our community, for the services that we provide, and then we have community services and then community involvement. We have, we only had three, three more calls than last year's statistics on those calls that are happening on top of one another. Emergencies that are happening on top of one another. So since twenty seventeen, there was only seventeen when that happened, uh, all those emergencies that happened, there were seventeen and seventeen. And now it's fifty-six, so, you know, between those years, we had a significant increase. And it looks like it's starting to slow down until our community starts to grow um more into the future. So we're hoping that that doesn't continue to happen, but I think that it will, um, just based on the nature of our growth. So in this trend, we we switched our our software this last year, if you remember right. And we didn't capture all of our calls like we normally do in the firehouse software that we had. So we're capturing it differently, the statistics are a little bit lower, but we're capturing other statistics in other means. So um, I'm hoping to be able to learn that stuff. Probably a little bit better and be able to show you both, not just our whole line of statistics, but also where we're capturing those other statistics as well. Because those are growing, and those are kind of like inspections that Chief Bull does, that we don't capture currently, but we are now in our image trend system. So I'm hoping to have different statistics and show you a true number of what we do for our community members in twenty-three. The Station Two facility, these numbers are very approximate, this was based on the number that I received at a management board. Oh, I don't know, was that a year, two years ago, Mayor? Uh, maybe three years now on on what the actual budget for the station was. And I kind of just taken, I took an approximate of how we actually receive funding, whether it was the grants or donations or how the city contributed, how the fire fund balance is contributing, how the county is contributing as well. It kind of made up this pie chart. I I I I know that um I have it on my my priority list to be able to capture the actuals once the station does open, which is hopefully here pretty soon. Um, a side note on that, on March twenty-fifth, you may have received the email on that. It's an invite for us to go down there as a department and do our ceremony and our swearing-in for our organization, it is where we give our citations and appreciation for all the firefighters for the year. And then everybody in our department needs to be sworn in because they're even new to the organization, or they have bumped into um higher positions. So please come down if you can join us on March twenty-fifth, um, I, Mayor, I know you'd be there to swear, but you're in, so. Um, please join us, that's the, that's kind of like us getting in before the grand opening. Uh, we probably no longer will have a soft opening just on timeframe, since it's getting kind of later in the season. We'll probably just have a grand opening in May, or or first part of June, I'm thinking probably late May, early June, excuse me. So please don't take these numbers to the actual, they are, they are approximate based on that budget that I received. And then the next page on this, it just show you kind of where we spent the fire fund balance and some of the funding and revenue that we received um, over the the past ten years. You might see a lot of change in this report next year, because it has been a decade, and I think it's time to kind of maybe close this chapter. And and then, and then move from twenty twenty-three moving on, and maybe I'll catch, start capturing the next um, ten years of statistics. But this will give you a great idea on what has happened and all the capital improvements that uh that we as an organization have done with the support of both the city and the county. And then there's just some uh, um, some priorities in here for building for the future on why we have done some of the things and some of the uh, the greater detail of um, the benefits as to what we're doing, building the residency program, building the training center, you know, Station Two, the multi-use in it. Um, all of that, what it, what it means to the greater services that we give our community. Uh, to include the training center, we will work with the police department initially on that grant. It's, it was built out on those funds, like seventy-five or seventy-nine thousand, I think it was. And then we're just continuing to chip away at it now, like this last year, as you know, um, we built out two shipyard areas to look like uh, it's a two-bedroom, one-bath apartment. And then my goal this year is to get with the other agencies and bring them down and kind of have a field day to see how we might be able to utilize that, each agency should be able to use it, and then how to collectively use it for maybe a large-scale exercise through the emergency management or office emergency management. Excuse me, I don't know what's going on here. So that is about, oh, oh, CMC is um hiring a full-time instructor to support the fire science program. So that just came about during the hiring process right now, currently, that person's gonna be required to teach fifteen credits each year. That will be to include the fire academy, but some associate degree classes as well. And I think the 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 reason why CMC is taking that route is because it has always been kind of all over the place where the instructors are. And they want somebody with um some you know, sustainability and and being able to actually understand what the program is and build it, build it better than what it is, so. Uh, right now, I think that's, that's all I have for now, if you have any questions, um, thanks, Mayor.
Any questions for the chief? Um, I I do have something, it's a big challenge. One of the things that we know about, you and Donna talked about, it is the the fire fund balance. How that that fund is derived, and I know it's not an easy calculation. Uh, but maybe a whirlwind of, in in the next two or three months, a whirlwind of twenty twenty-two cost versus revenue of the fire fund balance, is that even a possibility, Donna?
I'm not sure if I can run it, I'm sorry.
I know you have to make a complete spreadsheet to make that work at all, I get it. Um, maybe it's something we can discuss, it's just that that flies under our radar all the time, and I understand why. And I sometimes have an approximation in my head of what's in there, but it's really hard to know. Um, what, what did we derive from wildland fire deployments in twenty twenty-two? And uh, just something, even if it's not dead on actor, still like to have some idea.
I, um. So I get a spreadsheet from Bo every year on what that is, he takes care of all the financials currently for that. For twenty twenty-two is a hundred and sixteen thousand, year prior is eighty-nine thousand. But there's, there's also uh flight standby that we do, I think that was roughly fourteen thousand. Yeah, uh, so, uh, and this year, just so everybody's aware, uh, everything that we purchased for the type one equipment, the type one equipment, I mean, the type three, the type one and Station Two, all was paid for out of the fire fund balance. And then we build BME for those, that equipment cost back into the fire fund balance, and Station Two, it runs a twin mix. And station two that runs at Twin Lakes. Yeah, exactly, okay, it should be, we should be at zero balance currently for all the money that went out for it. But um yes, Mayor, I agree.
That stuff is kind of a, you know, that that part of it where where we spend money and then we're gonna be reimbursed. I don't really care about that, I just most numbers would be fine, you know, what do we spend, what was our cost? And then what what was our mobility into the forest service and then what's the doubt, even that's a good starting point, so enough of that.
Oh, uh, what she was gonna say, oh, uh, quick update on type three, um we're all, we had a final inspection. So we're gonna go out on uh the fifth, sixth. And uh the sixth will be the actual final inspection day, and then if there's minor things that they can fix within a day or two. Then Bo and Cass are gonna drive it back from Boise, if it takes longer than that, then we'll have to come back and then we'll have to go back out again, but so. We're hoping that um there there won't be a lot of major changes and then we driving home.
Yeah.
Six March, okay.
Things are happening.
All right, uh next up, we have the street department.
Mayor of City Council. Uh we've had a busy month in January, uh just doing the actual snow and ice removal on the streets. We put in over eight hundred hours, man-hours on doing that, uh we only had about two hundred and eighty hours of actual snow. Of snow removal, not a lot of notice here, uh we're getting kind of worried about some skateboarding. I did talk to one of the members of uh Rome Beach today, they claim that they have some of those Spanish way templates and it should be enough. They don't use the community, I just thought of that out today.
Okay, and so we don't use a battery cable, right?
No, no, it's just too, it's too long, everything. But we're working on all that, uh skating, we're trying to get all of our equipment on, and we already, Chief has said we've gone through the whole route. The other towns and uh I attend every house will be my first time actually setting up for one. Uh our guys are all old hand at it, so they know that needs to be done and they're schooling me on that, but it's quite a. A worrying experience, so uh did talk to Michael or one that the county is going to. Have a message boards available to us for the northern and southern, so we can uh. Advise all the truckers that are coming in, people can have a truck around the building and open to that. We did have a couple of other things that we were involved in throughout the month here. Um we've been helping Main Street at the taper apartment, uh we have our handyman Chanti. He's working on drywall and we could get a plumber in there, finding out the water runner and everything should be, is that going well?
Everything's great.
Good, good.
I was in there today, that wall looked good.
Yeah, I checked with him a couple of times, he had a couple of wires on the floor and he picked up, thank you, quick on that. Um let's see what else. He's been having a lot of issues with uh Zife Park with vandalism in there, I know the chief is working with him closely about that. To replace and I believe it's the calendar and hopefully we should hopefully we'll be able to cancel maybe on this and. Be able to get them either charged or at least get some restitution out of the locks, bars and. Uh right now, the guys have just been working more and more on cleaning up streets. We're popping a lot of ice on the snow path, uh they did Chesnut and Second Street today. So we're gonna be working on some more streets, we've gotten East Side, Eight, Seven. Nine, both East and West, I believe tomorrow we're gonna work on Champ and the eleven street, we can get those. Uh next week, we're gonna be really hard on the Upper Street and High Street, getting ready for all of our deep work and. And everything, so we can have those streets nice and clean and ready to go. And I think that's pretty much all I have, yeah.
Any questions?
I had one, um, one, if you're doing a great job removing the ice. Is there any chance that signs could be put up of like, hey, we're gonna be removing ice around this time. So that vehicles could be moved if, I know it would be a long shot, cause you need all the vehicles to uh to. Break the ice off the street completely and go with that, but. Um at the very least, so that we know around when to expect that, I know I was. Unable to use my vehicle for a good period of the day when I needed it um. Because of that, just didn't see it coming, um is there any possible way to put up notices or?
We would have to uh sign those things twenty-four hours ahead of time and stuff to do that. And the possibility of the weather changing, everything, a lot of us that we're doing right now, we were supposed to get a storm those last couple days and the guys weren't expecting the snow. Well, they didn't, so that's why they jumped into getting those, great, uh generally when we do the one hundred block. And sometimes the two hundred blocks, if we've got the weather looks good and everything, we will sign them and we will ensure. Um the upper parts of the streets, um people generally come out moving and if you do each move, guys will. They'll either clear you a little path or they'll let you out, just you know, just indicate to them that you need to get out and go, they'll help you. And if not, I'm usually around close by and if I have to find a way out, I'll I'll do that. Um and I've done that for several people already, so that is. There, if it's new, thanks.
I received a comment from a gentleman in my ward who um was. Although he acknowledged we had not had much snow this year, was nevertheless uh grateful for the job you guys were doing. Thought you guys were doing a great uh, a good job and was especially thankful that. When we did get snow, um that somehow the the plowberms blocking the driveways have not been present. This year, we didn't know if it was the new blade or just the driver, but it's something that he said he's had to deal with every year and he's really enjoyed not having that.
So you would make quite a difference on that, they can control that a lot better, the lack of the amount of snow, it makes it a little bit. And plus, I try and follow them around and if I see that they want to be too big of a verb someplace. I'll generally try and go clean it out a little bit, uh that's so basically we've had some senior center, uh senior citizens. That need their driveways kept open, so that's why I give maybe a call, I drive around checking driveway. And so, but if you're ready, if it's too high, we we try to.
Thank you.
Max, Tracy, any questions? I do have a, just, it's just to kind of head up, every year, March, April, things warm up. All the water runs down uh to the water side, we know what happens, second street shut down, it'll become a splash nightmare. And then it it melts in the day, freezing night. Uh so what we've asked of the street department is to try and in the afternoon, is it's not part of the schedule. Most have to have somebody separately go and run the flush on the streets at four o'clock in the afternoon. So just to, just something, you know, in terms of of expectation, of it makes a huge difference in the driving ability.
So what I'm saying is part of the reason why they're doing the west side, getting those channels done, so they can get them done. Good, and I have talked to them about maybe two uh of the operators. Probably themselves staying awake in the afternoon and rolling down.
How it works, but just, just. Oh, yeah, it's a little, it's kind of a serious deal. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
There's some animal shelters.
Um I do have a kitten who's trying to attack my headphones, so we'll see if this gets interesting. Um, January was pretty busy for us, we had five surrenders. Um like right off the bat in January, we did have a few surrenders come in, we had seven adoptions and twenty-one impounds. And then um as we moved down towards the grants, instead of one dollar, it's two thousand five hundred dollars. From the Animal Assistant Foundation, Forest Day and Neuter. We received a four thousand dollar check from a Texas foundation and I'm working on getting in contact with them because. The language that they sent with the check declared us S F five O one C three, which we are not, so we cannot currently cash that check. Um but we are trying to get that worked out. And I did apply for one thousand five hundred dollars for the Colorado Pet Overpopulation Fund, so that comes from the license plates that people buy. And that would also go towards Bay and Neuter. We had our open house on Sunday, February twelfth, we raised over a hundred and forty dollars in donations. We had thirteen community members attend, uh people looked at animals, foster animals. Uh made some enrichment for some of our animals and then last week. I attended the career fair at Cloud City High School and there were some um Lake County High School students there as well. And then Ark Valley, we recently transferred in two dogs from their facility. One has been adopted today and the other one um does have a potential home here soon. Ark Valley was inundated with some animals and they have helped us out in the past, so we had some open kennels and were able to bring these dogs into our care.
Thank you, uh any questions for Caitlin? Sorry, I was not even making the open house, uh you had a hot look, but I I I hope it sounds like that must have gone nicely.
Yeah, I think it went well, Dana went there, thanks for showing up, um we gave some tours and had some nice chats with community members.
I I do have a thought on this thing, Ark Valley and 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 the the dog that was uh. Um. Abandoned to the the shelter now, the people want it back and that was the lawsuit that went on. Remembering I've read, I felt like Ark Valley has done exactly the right thing, uh that's just my opinion, do you have an opinion on that?
Oh yeah, definitely, all the surrounding shelters are sending them our support, um they're being dragged through the mud and it's not really fair.
Yeah, I didn't think so either, thank you. Any questions for Kate? Thank you very much. Uh Deputy City Clerk, uh just the license report. Any questions about that? It looks like we're at a hundred and seventy, class one and class two licenses accounting is the cap. She she uh one more is in process, which will be the cap, um and of course, we're gonna have this conversation next Tuesday. Uh that's one of the topics in conversation in terms of short-term is is the cap, so.
I'm just so glad we passed that. Several people checking in. I did wanna mention, we had an outside source contact us about how many movies or for criminals we have. And they said that their count was three hundred and forty, which is more than double the cap. So we wanted to do some research into how many are actually being listed and if any are being inappropriately operated with. Because we don't have, we had at one point, like, Muni Reds.
The answer to that question is that we did this last year with the enforcement and so Muni Reds runs the numbers for us. And 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 I think to be honest, this, you know, it's a a company similar, I think, to Muni Reds that's that's offering us their services. And this is a sales pitch to do the same thing that Muni Reds is doing, but we we did that last year, so Muni Reds pulled the. Um data from Airbnb, uh Verbo, all the others and and said, here's what we think. We went ahead and contacted a lot of those properties and said, you know, are you doing a short-term rental? If you're not, you need to take this down, the people who weren't in compliance came within compliance. Uh the year, remember, we did two different letters and um, you know, and and sometimes you capture people, there was one. Uh I think I may have told you about this, one. A woman who is actually long-term renting and she actually, you know, she accidentally got captured in that data and she said, I'm long-term renting. You know, and and I said, great, we sent you a couple of letters, you know, please update your address with the county records. So that when we send you a letter, you can let us know, cause we had resorted to posting on the actual properties saying. We've, you know, and they were like a handful of properties, we ended up doing that with and she said, I didn't get any of your prior letters and I said. Well, what address do you have at the county, she said, oh, I haven't updated that, so it does capture some people who are not sure term renting anymore. So we told them, take your listings down and it captures some people who may be potentially long-term listing, but we can do that again this year. We can ask Muni Reds to pull that data and do our version again, but it it turned out, uh Sarah Day helped us with that last year. It actually, um you know, a lot of people uh called and, you know, either removed their listing or got a license, so.
I think especially as we're approaching a cap or I've reached a cap, it's gonna be increasingly important that we.
Especially people calling and going to purchase a property only based on whether it could be short-term rent or not, which is, I hate that.
That is a caller getting a lot, especially people uh out of state that want their second home here.
Yeah.
Um they are asking me to run addresses to see if it's in the municipality.
Yeah, it said, no, you can't have a short-term license ever.
Well, you know, we did, we did have, uh we did have some available, as you recall, a while back, we had about twelve available. And that was also, you know, things that are are, we are having more men within the resources to do. That was where someone had started the process for short-term rental and had started the application and so we would hold that for them. Because we don't wanna have, you know, somebody complete the process and not have a license available, so we we reached out to those folks and said, look. Please complete the process or we're gonna release these licenses and a couple of people didn't ever complete the process. So the one that we were holding for that became available, so um, you know, it. I I, you know, it's hard to know if there are truly as many as. You you know, someone can put a listing up and take it down really quickly, uh but we we did do enforcement last year, we can do enforcement again soon.
Thank you, do you have questions on the Deputy Clerk report? Again, we have the Building Department report, now the one going on in January. Next up, we have the Training Department.
All right, Mayor, Council, good evening, I apologize, I was out sick last week and I didn't have an opportunity to get a report to need a packet this week. So I do have some hard copies that are passing out here today, I apologize, uh council members are going to be assuming you don't have a. Um report in front of you, um but just a couple of highlights from the report, uh Community Justice Center was the big active application that the Planning Zone Commission. Uh heard this past month, uh there was a preliminary here held on February eighth. Um staff did a very in-depth analysis, we didn't leave any stone unturned for the for the planning commissioner, you had a winded report. Uh Planning Zone Commission was generally supportive of the project, the application will um return for a final hearing on April twelfth. Um regarding rail yard phase two, this is under the category of just active construction um projects. The High Country Developers, we've had a couple of meetings with them, but um just want to update council, they are currently proposing to use only natural gas and solar energy. For phase two, we will see how that shakes out, they're proposing not to use Excel provided which will uh you know grid power supply. Um so that'll be interesting, so stay tuned for that. Um regarding ADUs, the Planning Zone Commission held a work session on ADUs. On January twenty-fifth and provided interpretation uh and and direction to staff. Uh ADUs are reviewed administratively, so um there's been some discussion in the past regarding density and how many ADUs are allowed. I want to get clarification from the P and Z on that, the uh P and Z did provide a direction to me that ADUs do count as density. And we should allow a maximum of one AU per primary dwelling unit. Uh so that clarification is not, you know, we have other standards, but it doesn't get that clear. Um so the Planning Zone Commission um suggested that whenever it did a chance at come forth with another code amendment to clarify that regarding ADUs. Um one that's updated council, that the the city, I'm sorry, the county rezoning for the animal shelter. The big L L storage property, um that was approved. And uh let the, uh I guess also regards to our uh county applications, on the level seven application, the level seven. Subdivision application, uh it's my understanding that was withdrawn last week by the applicant. Uh then lastly, just um as we were, as I mentioned earlier, we have the joint work session, we're very. Uh then lastly, just um as we were, since I mentioned earlier, we have the joint work session for very short term rentals. Next Tuesday with the Planning Zone Commission. Unlike um some of these previous work sessions that I've I've led regarding historic preservation amendments. Um I'm gonna just provide some considerations, but I'm gonna leave this one a little bit more open ended. Um a lot of this uh this request for the joint work session is coming from the Planning Zone Commission members specifically. Um so I'll be there and provide a couple of considerations, but I'll I'll leave that a little more open end before discussion. That's it for me. Thank you.
Uh just a couple of clarification on the level seven application. Um it was my understanding that the applicant uh didn't withdraw the application. With the intent of never submitting it again, the intent was to address some of the um issues raised by the county. Was that your understanding?
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. That's my understanding also.
Uh and then on the rezoning, just a point of clarification, I'm sure the animal shelter would like to know um on that rezone over by Big Ls. Did they uh make an exception for the animal shelter in that zoning?
Yes, so that, so there was a code amendment that was processed concurrently with that application. That was actually one of the reasons why. The the most recent uh tabling of of that review was rescheduled to another later meeting. So that um the proper public notice could occur for that concurrent code amendment. So so clar- clarification, that code amendment um was approved, it would allow animal shelters. As in allowed use um under the proposed rezone, so.
Any questions for Caitlin? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Uh next up, we see our sales tax uh comparisons. It is interesting to note, as we look at these, we looked at January for twenty nineteen to January twenty twenty three, it is tripled. It's tripled. It it's hard to even imagine that happening, but that's what's happening. Um so hopefully it's a harbinger of the future. Uh even if even if it levels out at some point, it's still a great thing for our community.
It 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 it's, there's correlation at all, I'm not sure, but I've noticed more articles recently, just uh in public interest stories about Leadville. There was a recent story in, I believe, the Denver Post about the Leadville Curling Club and encouraged people to come up. Um fifty-two eighty magazine ran a little story about local businesses you should consider shopping at. And Galena was one of the businesses they suggested. And there was one other thing I saw recently about Leadville and it was more a. Public, you know, just said, here's something of interest and Leadville happened to be one of the the cities they mentioned, so I don't. I I don't know if it's the. We are becoming more discovered by places as a as a as an interesting town to visit or or things to do. But it was just something I had noticed.
Any chance we can stop that now?
Well, you know, it's it's double edged sword because you're, you know, your our 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 general fund is primarily based upon sales tax. That that it it is the majority of our general fund and for better or for worse, I'm gonna say it, all of our eggs are in really one basket. And and so it is something that needs to be managed because if you stop it. You, we stopped the money that's been able to provide the things that we've done in the past few years. So I I think it's a matter of being. Managing it uh and being thankful it hasn't gone dramatically down.
Should be interesting to see lodging tax numbers comparison to that to see if there's an incorporation. I mean, that's just people visiting.
You know, maybe the the third, the fourth quarter of lodging taxes took a dive. And so it's actually instead of acted up. Yeah, so yeah, be interested to see as the year goes on. Comparisons to.
One of the interesting things I saw, maybe it was last year, about lodging, which was interesting, was that that after the pandemic, you know, domestic travel slipped off a little bit. But um lodging and stimulus had increased their prices. So in the bottom, their bottom line potentially didn't change that much, but it was, it was because they raised prices. In uh the attend, they, I don't know if you call it attendance, that overnight stays were down a little bit, so it. Yeah, who can predict? Who who could predict that we we wouldn't see a complete fall off during the pandemic, so.
That's the person looking for lodging for uh Ski Joy Weekend. I guess uh Saturday, Friday and Saturday of Ski Joy Weekend in Dallas, three hundred fifty dollars a night. I said, I think part of it. No. Anyway, that, I mean, it it really is uh the.
Well, I think those are the, you know, those are the kind of events that that is, you know, if people have heard about it, you know, it is, it is a premier event, I think, for for Leadville. And many communities have it, you know, they have a winter carnival or whatever it is.
We do have a lot of things going on. Uh next up, financials. Donna?
Good evening. I guess there's not really too much to talk about in January because there's. Not much to compare to, but um. I did want to touch base with accommodations tax. I am happy to report that I have reached out to everybody who says they have not paid. And I've done to one who says that they have a family emergency, so she should, she's been paying this week. Um so that is good. So the total that we will have received for the. For quarter will be. Um thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. Which brings us to a total for the year, including the January that the city actually contributed. So that total will be two hundred and thirty-three thousand one twenty-five. So the total that um we have paid to the um tourism is. Ninety thousand nine hundred and eighteen eighty-three. When I started writing this four quarter check to them, which I probably have you tomorrow.
That's great, because we projected eighty-three, so we hopefully really happen with that.
Yeah. Um the other thing I wanted to tell about, first of all, is the calculation, because all we're looking for is a delta in the wildfire. Um I've come very close to both those numbers, but there's three line items that I use. For the revenue that's coming in and the expenditures going out, so it's very easy to figure out a financial statement. Um so what I came up with for two thousand twenty-two is earned almost a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, so it's very close. The only thing is, is that this might not be completely accurate because Bo knows how much he's billed for, but I don't know how much we've received until we actually get it. So there might be some discrepancy there sometime, but if that's already the way we want.
That's, that's great, though. Thank you. That's really, it helps me just to kind of know what it is. We're spending, and we have obligations in there that are still sitting there as obligations that uh that we need to think of also. In the form that he gives me, if you don't mind, uh so the one sixteen that he gave me, it doesn't include like the DM. And and some other revenue that's actually in the bottom line because um we don't know that until we get there. So, okay, thank you both very much.
Um the other thing I wanted to let you guys know is with the Tabor Opera House, I may have told you this already, but it was very exciting news for Sarah. And myself that phase one and the SAT grant is paid in full, so we are done. We're now working on phase two and it's right on track. We just received the first payment for that.
Just, just remind everybody, how much was that phase one? How much money was that?
Um well, it was a total of altogether, it was one point five.
Yeah. So, thank you. Yeah, that's, those are some big numbers.
Yeah, big numbers. And it's still so good to have you here. Yes, so Sarah and I went out to lunch to celebrate the other day. Um the other thing I wanna talk about is Hannah and I are gonna do a training for STRS next week. Um just so we can clean that up a little bit. I think it's been um. So we wanna get some good training on it and we're also gonna get the training on lodging res, which is who does the non-compliant. So we'll be able to get that list and start generating.
Doing the training?
Uh Muni Reds.
Oh, Muni Reds is doing training?
Yeah, we set it up with them, so.
Is that, is that on on turn?
Yeah.
Or you have to go to someone?
Donna and I are taking a turn. Yeah, so that'll be exciting. Um get that cleaned up. For people to feel like we're comfortable in the STR side of it, so. Um, I think on that, I don't really have anything else. Would you have questions?
It is, I wanna thank Donna for a a a lot of the legwork that she has put in. You know, when she talks about the accommodations tax and chasing everybody down. That's, that's just pure legwork, so I appreciate that and I appreciate your payoff. Uh you were, hopefully, and never lose you to a collections agency, cause it sounds like you're really good. But but no, I mean, I think that's the thing is, you know, this is the bandwidth that, you know, we we have, but sometimes don't have to to chase these things down. But it really is between um business licensing, you know, the short term rental compliance, the accommodations tax, it just takes labor. And and I appreciate the effort and it, it's nice that it's paid off.
That that accommodations ta- tax effort is really turned out much with that year. I mean, you know, it's gratifying to make a projection and then have it come through.
Yeah, and I can, one quick comment on that too is that when people report zero. Then they say that they're not renting it out. The training that we're gonna give is going to be that we can go onto lodging res and actually see. Are you actually not ready to move or should you be? Some numbers, so that'll be exciting too.
I'm gonna say, is 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 the interim chief gonna give you a batch?
It would be interesting to see if that training talks about people who are flying anywhere. They're not advertising, they're taking cash, maybe there's nothing you can do about, but it'll be a case to know.
Thank you.
Any questions for Donna?
Uh one question on the note of funds in the contingency fund that may not be contingency. Um do we have an estimate of how much that is?
We don't exactly.
Yeah. I really, I appreciate your, you, you, your clarification on some of this. It is like seventy some odd thousand from the prior year that was surplus. And we had to put it somewhere in the budget, but in order to avoid doing like a supplemental budget, it can't be like earmarked for something. So she lumped it in contingency, um just to be like this fund, but whether. That's available or whether we decide to do something else with it is, is. It's a council's discretion, I think, is the, the thought on the contingency, I think it was, wasn't it eighty-seven or, yeah.
Eighty-seven thousand.
Right, so when we did the budget for twenty twenty-three, you know, we we put all the numbers together and it came out with a surplus of eighty-seven thousand dollars. And you could let the surplus go, but then you can't use it. So we put in the contingency and then it becomes a a city council decision. And at throughout twenty twenty-three, where do you wanna spend that money? And, you know, we've, we talked about a number of things, um you know, I think that. Maybe putting some more money, I don't know that it's a ton of money, but maybe putting some more money towards paving or whatever the council decides they want to do with that. You can decide.
Well, we did last year, we had the eighty-seven thousand and then because of like the stuff that we wanted to go to economic development and whatever, we ended up with thirty thousand. Which is just discretionary and that's what we've been doing like. The play, a high school, um but now there's this extra seventy-four thousand.
Okay, nice to know. Thank you. All right, good question. Any other questions for Donna? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, time for bills. Any questions about any of the bills?
Is there more comments? Um are utilities are expensive? I saw specifically the PD's was five hundred and forty for, is that just for that section of the building or?
For, uh, you know, honestly, we just do it as a slip of rate. The percentage of buildings, so really, City Hall is eighty-four percent, Police Department is sixteen percent.
So it's just.
That's the only way I can figure it out.
I mean, more, I guess, to the point regardless of it, it's just specifically the police department in there or not, uh but. Is that we definitely could use some energy efficiency remodeling.
So I think, I think, I think a a boiler, the efficiency of. I had someone, I had to do a review of my house and they looked at my furnace and they gapped it, just believed. And they said, this furnace is five hundred fifty or sixty. Uh and they said, at least they can find sixty, sixty percent efficient. They said, if you put a new boiler, it'd be ninety-seven percent efficient. So, I mean, that's what they were looking at. The other thing is, what we know, looking at my gas bill for the last couple of months, we know a couple of things. Number one, we had a cold winter. They said the average temperature in twenty twenty-one December was was uh twenty-two degrees. And the average temperature in twenty twenty-two was seventeen degrees. And the 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 third thing is that gas, natural gas prices, that people said almost doubled. Um and so it's, it's like, worst storm. Uh my utility bill was up substantially.
And and if you look at, i- if you look at the buildings the city owns, we don't own any new energy. We don't, you know, you look at City Hall as what, nineteen oh four? You look at Tabor Opera House, you look at the buildings, the house with the I, the Tabor Home. None of them are energy efficient. And, you know, again, if facilities assessment might tell us, you could make these buildings incredibly energy efficient. But it's gonna cost, you know, X amount of money. I I mean, you know, long term goal, I'd love to see us be able to do what some communities have done and, you know. Uh cobbled together grant money to do a complete refurbishing of the building, uh but.
Would be great, cause man, I I know utilities are just expensive right now for everyone, but really expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Donna. Any other questions about the bills? I did have one. Fire Department. Real quick. What are Kryger jackets? Is that Kryger jackets? Oh, it's these jackets here. We got department jackets, winter jackets.
Okay.
See, that's what I'm saying. We need City Hall purpose for the boiler, right?
He had bad power. We had, we had lacquer jackets. Thinking about, I I would, would we as an organization like some long, long sleeve sleeve shirts? For for the city or or hoodies or anything? I know, I I I have that too, but I just, we haven't done that in about a zillion years. Okay, we'll talk about it. All right, any other issues with the bills? Uh I would entertain a motion to pay the electric charges.
And then the land moves to pay the bills?
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. All were in favor. Next up, Main Street, respect.
Um good evening. I'm Nancy Bailey, Director of the Land of Main Street Program. Um can you, do you mind turning with the presentation? On what? On the agenda? Oh, that's in the, that's included in the packet. Oh, okay. They have it on the, they have it? Okay, yeah, great. Um. Good evening. So um I'm gonna kind of overview, I have my notes on what kind of the on the gap, so I mean, I'm being conscientious. Um so the first couple pages, just kind of give you a a brief overview of the program, who we are, what we do and our board members. Um but um we have really flourished and I don't wanna spend a lot of time in Berkeley near you well, but um. I do wanna kind of acknowledge um the tremendous program um that we, and the program that we've experienced. And I do wanna say it, it doesn't go without a team. And I mean, shout out to Lori and Tony especially and Donna. I mean, there's, it's a team effort and we all have to work on this together and I think that it's kind of stronger and better than 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 it's been since I started. So um a couple of things, I'm not too. since I started, so, um, a couple things, I'm not too, uh, this is where I'm at. Uh, your report, your, your paper highlights, um, what it does in our mission, um, and part of our strategic fund last year was really to hone in on our, um, board development and program sustainability, kind of perceptions of the community and, and what they know and deal, um, with the Main Street program, um, and the twenty twenty-two highlights, and I'm kinda going, going ahead, cause I wanna kinda spend a little bit of time on the transition toward the end. Uh, but our events were just completely, we, we achieved almost exceeded most goals. Uh, again, to the most important thing, I think, out of all this, and I won't get into a lot of detail, but most of the, we were at all of these eight events, actually made the mistake of saying, uh, and we raised over thirteen thousand dollars, um, for the program, I think that's a record for the Main Street program and we are continuing to, you know, develop meaningful, uh, programming to help us with program sustainability, um, so that we can be a little bit more independent financially. Um, and some projects I wanna highlight, um, you know, the parkland, Lori did kind of report on, uh, the parkland and sometimes we, there are blessings in the end, I've learned. And as you know, we did receive some additional funding from CDO at the end of last year and, um, we are, as she mentioned, moving forward. Uh, Main Street Board is very active, um, in the process of working with Hope on rolling out competitive community projects when we get closer to it, um, and working closely with her on, um, kind of the looking field of the park and I think, um, our end result and our ribbon cutting, that will be happening in the summer, I think it's just gonna be long time coming and it will be quite celebratory, uh, let's see. And also, you know, let really bloom and so well and we, we, we're growing that program every single year. And, um, I could take a lot of feedback, um, from community members about, you know, how beautiful it makes everything in the summertime, so we are, you know, continuing to, uh, to grow those types of programs. Um, and then also, you know, that we, um, brought in through our Main Street, being designated as a, as an accredited Main Street program, the Main Street Group for Business Grant, um, over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Earl Democrat, so, I mean, the programs, despite transitions, at the end of twenty twenty-two, they are doing really well and I think that it's a lot to be proud of and it's, it, it's testament to our board and all of you. Do you have any questions?
The whole thing?
I'm about to prepare for part and I was gonna get into a transition conversation.
Um, are you gonna talk about the website?
Yes.
Okay.
I can do that. Um, last, uh, in twenty twenty-two, we designated some mini grant funds through our Colorado Main Street Program Partners, um, to allocate that for a new website. Um, we started development of that in the fourth quarter of last year, um, and with all of the transition of the program experience, we that we got to put on pause until we kind of figured out what the programs next step were, but I have had a meeting with the program or with the website developer and we're moving full speed ahead. Um, on, on that, so we'll, we'll look forward to, uh, to report in your next few months. So that is something that, uh, that is on our strategic plan, which I'll talk about in a second, um, but that is in our strategic planning upfront this year. Um, uh, along with, uh, um, being elevated in the Colorado Main Street Program to a candidate, so it's, uh, yeah, there's three levels and we're, we're down here, we're gonna go up here and then we're gonna hopefully skip a group, but I don't know. We'll see. Um, but as far as the transition, we have a busy, we have been busy, we've had lots of meetings. Um, we have a lot of exciting, um, events and types of activities. Um, but the one thing is, I do have a new home, I love it, nobody's welcome here, here's the sign, it's a window, you should visit. Um, and coffee and always snacks. Uh, but, uh, we do have a full participated board and I do wanna kind of highlight that, that's something the program hasn't had in a long time and that consistency and that whole participant, one hundred percent participation, which means that we never not have a forum at our monthly board meetings, so we wanna continue with our quality updates to you all. Um, so we'll have a quarter one update with a lot more of kind of the, the nuts and bolts of what that partnership looks like with the community fund, um, which is such a blessing as we work through the growth of the program and the evolution of, of what this developed in the future and we're open to all ideas. Uh, but for right now, it kinda gives us a home and, and gives some program sustainability, which is really important when we're going after grant funding and going after, you know, additional mini grant funding from our state partners, they like to see that program stability. Um, and, um, and, and again, we, we're putting the finishing touches on our strategic plan, which is I think the most thoughtful, comprehensive, but simple strategic plan that we've had and it's directly correlates to the fourth one approach to the Main Street America program. Um, I do contribute a bit on, as an alternate commissioner on HPC and, um, we have a renewed, uh, extra laser focus on making sure that all of our communications and our events are really focused around community inclusion, um, so we have a couple of projects that we're working in on that. And, um, one last thing is, um, the Community Fund event. Um, the state of the community, which I love, I love this event, um, so much and I did wanna mention, is it okay, can I do a shameless plug on theme?
Yeah.
Um, so the theme will be downtown Main Street. Um, so we will be focusing on a little bit of highlighting the Main Street program, we'll highlight on HPC, of course, highlights from our city and county partners. And then, um, a, uh, a variety of, of businesses along Main Street to come in and, um, and particularly ones that are really taking advantage of historic tax credits, you know, current, uh, recipients. Um, and ones, uh, businesses that are really going the extra mile to kind of, um, get a, a federal designation like the Elder Borough and other things like that, um, and join us at, uh, at Ski Joring at Sykes Park, we're doing, we're giving away hot chocolate and I think we're all gonna be dressed up, but I'm not sure, uh, and we all look forward to our presentations, um, at the, at the Community Fund, but I just wanted to again personally thank you for being patient during this transition, I know there's a lot of uncertainty. Um, but the program's never been stronger and we really appreciate your continued and increased um, financial contribution to the program, it shows a lot of dedication on the city part of how important historic preservation and our program is. Any questions?
Yes, I have a couple, um, so the, the website, actually, I just had to chuckle, cause I went to that domain and it says, you know, like which is like this big cityscape, which is just, yeah, it's just, it's really funny, it's like some area outside of Denver or something.
Oh, weird.
Thank you. It was, no, it's just funny, um, but I'm wondering if when that does come online, if it'd be possible, like, you know, lead through like the city webpage to that, you know, um, maybe like through tour, a lot more visitor center. The, my other question is, um, what are your social media outlets, with who, which social media do you go through?
Uh, we have Facebook, we have Instagram, um, we sent out a bio for the communication, uh, there. And, uh, yeah, that, that's the assessment right now, we're gonna be putting out a press release, Main Street Bill in the next month, just announcing these, and these changes and that we're not, we didn't go anywhere, we're still here, we're still, we're still doing all the things.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for the Main Street program? I have one real quick, are you, are you gonna do the same that you did last year with flowers? Uh, the flo- the flower bar pots and some of the big giant ones and then the hanging baskets?
Yeah, so we will be doing, um, we're, we'll be expanding our expansion from last year, so we will be doing hanging baskets. We'll be doing standard boxes, um, and, uh, we'll be doing large boxes and in addition to that, this year, we're gonna be doing on some sponsored, uh, corner areas, um, that often get overlooked, um, you know, in the summertime, so, uh, yeah, we're working on. So we, we, we're putting the finishing touches on that budget right now, but we're really looking to grow that program.
Are you gonna bring back where you can put in just like the little statements instead of just a business, I, you know?
That was my question, first day I've ever been listening, uh, the planters, there's a button angle room in those tiny little states. So, we did discuss that at our board meeting today and, uh, it is, uh, um, I think it was, there were all the brands that we can revisit, but those sort of those things look like, so that we can include a little statement, I'd really like that we did that, it was just when we got around to doing it, it just, it was the statement nor the company's logo was it wasn't too much in that kind of, I think it's like literally like four by four.
I just had a really enjoyable, uh, competition going on with another community member with sort of, sort of stoic philosopher quotes, you know, mine against each other and I'd like to reestablish that.
I mean, it's definitely a government intervention. Okay.
Thank you very much. I would say that, uh, boy, Main Street came alive last year, I'm looking for a relationship. Okay, at this time, uh, public meetings where we still didn't move sanitation to the second uh, Wednesday of each month for March.
Do we normally get, so I know our public meetings planner has been for our city meetings, do we include, I mean sanitation?
We always have, just this, this special district, so, yeah. I would say standard community is going to be March the thirteenth, five, five o'clock, that's right. I mean, that's always agreed on. During the county, we can change March seventh, March seventh, okay. Oh, about April, okay. Yeah. Like I was planning on having a new child in a month, so. Play a reward, yes, okay.
I'm sorry, um, what time was that then?
Eight thirty, March seventh. Any other thoughts or changes to the calendar? Okay, great, thank you. Uh, next up, we have various reports, um, the silence has more touched on, Representative Patterson is gonna be here, that's a pretty high level visit. Uh, you know, Justin, her, her staff person said, I haven't heard from City Council, I said, you're having a meeting, you will be on Friday and our City Council worked. And I said, the chances are, you're not gonna get a lot of discussion, if, if they, if they can make it, they will. Uh, but they're also in the five o'clock thing, so, uh, if you can make that, that's also a possibility. She's, she's new, just took office last month, uh, in, in the, the district, I mean, our district will realign. Uh, and so she's our new US Representative, uh, in District Seven.
And that's this Friday?
It is this Friday, yeah. Um, also, we know the local is happening on Saturday. Um, not a huge deal, but that's, that's a great event. It will, it is, it actually is, I mean, you get about three hundred skiers and, and it is, it is a qualifier for the cookie buyer. And, um, and it is the most fun you can have on skis. And we use their thirty pot pots of soup and chili and all kinds of things. And the best part is in the five K, the kids dressed up and it is so much fun. Uh, I've heard the announcers dressed as pretty obnoxiously, we'll see if that happens again this year.
So the minutes will reflect that the announcer is obnoxious?
You, you've been, you could, you could take that one to the bear. Uh, Vero is having like an open house this Thursday at Mineral, I think at five o'clock. It's the broadband cover. They, they, they just wanna try and talk people into joining.
It's also the first guy, kind of. Sorry, there's.
Ski Jordan coming weekend after next, uh, we are not running out of things to do. Any council reports?
Uh, I'll give you your weekly, bi-weekly council report on housing, um. Chibi has been trust obviously had issues over here on Laura Board, um, with getting the development down. Um, we even stated that the expected time is at the end of the year to us. Uh, we'll see, I don't know if that changed in or if that had anything, uh, or was discussed in any way, meaningful way, uh, during the Regional Housing Authority. Um, but that's as far as I know so far, uh, homelessness, we heard, is continuing to be an issue. Um, a dozen plus twenty-nine, uh, counted twenty-nine that were officially surveyed, a dozen that were suspected and this is uh, homelessness and it's hardest for, meaning no access to electricity, no access to heating and, or access to shelter. Um, so, it's clear that these are times where we need to allocate as much resources as we can, so something to think about with that, those funds that we have, um, as well as uh, for other basic needs such as food, so it's important to keep those two things in mind. Um, when, uh, we, whenever we get to discuss those seventy-four thousand dollars. Um, unfortunately, the advocates' application for, um, expanding their services uh, we've had who has killed, uh, they're kind of seeing why they got to the last stages and they were under the assumption that if they got to that place, it was mostly procedure, but unfortunately, they did not get accepted. Meaning, we're going to need to have some type of, in my opinion, work to make up for that. Um, given the intensive amounts of homelessness that we are facing and it's not even summertime yet. So, it's not looking great, to be honest, um. Things could definitely be a lot better, but I think if as long as we support communities and do what we can, um, and support the agencies that are doing the work and make sure that we're supportive in both financial and just spiritual, um, you know, conversation, I know there's a lot of hostility right now, um, with, um, a lot of agencies, but just you know, we might hold the words, it's really hard work to do and everyone's trying their best, um, so. Other than that, there's not much else, nothing new, um, but just keep in mind going forward. Especially when we have those talk special tournaments and such.
Christian, this is an observation. I had a thought about it the last week, I will be surprised that we don't have more churches at the table in this conversation, I know that Jake and Porter Stone has been involved in the conversation, uh, but that, that's all, just an observation.
I would say they're doing their part, uh, to the extent that a church probably would. Um, we, obviously, this is in great, we've had a conversation with other church members about starting new areas to work there, but, uh, at the end of the day, if they're not gonna fill the shoes, someone has to, so. Uh, I think regardless if it's the churches or us or advocates, someone has to stop and then start making moves.
Should be all above, yes, okay, thank you. Any questions, Christian? All right, any other council reports? Okay, thank you all very much, uh, it is eight ten, uh, and this City Council is adjourned.